Council meeting, Monday, June twenty seven, two thousand and twenty-two. Pursuant to government code section five four nine five three E. Members of Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's YouTube channel. At HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot YouTube dot com backslash daily city video meetings. Or on the cities, the city's agenda website at HTTPS WWW dot daily city dot org. Backslash agendas or on local channel twenty-seven. Okay. Can we all please rise for the pleasure diligence?
United States of America, to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, yeah, okay. Uh, Miss City Clerk, if you can please conduct roll call, please.
Mr. Buenaventura.
Present.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod.
Present. All right, um, can I get a motion to approve the mid, the, the regular meeting of June thirteen, two thousand and twenty-two?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, moving on to the approval of it, of the agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Maybe first, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Ray Buenaventura, all those in favor say aye.
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 On to the consent agenda. Um, are there any items that would like to be pulled and discussed?
Glenn Sylvester, in the absence of pulling any items, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester, can I have a second?
Second.
You have a second by Councilmember Pam Di Giovanni. All right. Communications, item number twelve.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I think we have to do a vote, please.
Oh, sorry about that. All of the favors say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. And teamwork makes the dream work, okay? And the consent agenda, so item number twelve, um, communications, appeal of staff determination of incompleteness related to zone change. Set, uh, Z C dash zero nine dash twenty-one dash zero one five two three seven. Amendment to King Plaza Plan Development Zoning, P D forty-seven, and we have, um, Michael Van Lookhausen. I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, I don't know why my title says Jeannie Ho, but, uh, obviously I'm not her. City of Daily City, uh, this is item comes before the council, uh, the city staff is asking the council to make a determination of completeness with regard to the item that the mayor mentioned, zone change Z C nine dash two one dash fifteen two thirty-seven. Um, the city staff, uh, put together a brief staff report outlining the issue. Before we get into that, um, the council members should have received an email, um, from the attorneys, uh, that represent Classic Bowl. Um, those attorneys, or the attorney rather, has cited that, um, it's their thought that, uh, due to that late notice that they received regarding this uh, determination that council's being asked to make that the item be continued. Um, I, I, I don't know if each one of you have received that request, but we wanted to make you, make sure that each, each of you had seen that. Um, so getting into the item, we'll just very briefly, um, essentially, the owners of, uh, the King Plaza Shopping Center. And that's a separate parcel, actually, from the owners of the Classic Bowling Center. Uh, have made an application to the city of Daily City to amend the plan development zoning for that property. And, um, one of the things that's included in the amendment request is a modification to the parking management program. The, uh, parking at the shopping center and at Classic Bowl, uh, they, they actually share parking. And the city staff had given a directive in an incompleteness letter to the owners of the King Plaza Shopping Center, um, and their application that the, um, Classic Bowl owners be included in the development of the parking management plan and that they be, uh, that those owners of the Classic Bowl also be a signatory to that. Um, the owners of King Plaza have, uh, made an effort to contact the Classic Bowl, uh, owners, and they provided evidence of that to the city staff. And, um, that was one of the things that, you know, does, uh, go a ways to, um, making the determination of incompleteness, but, um, it was our thought that, um, they actually hadn't been a signatory as requested, and so, um, we had continued to make an application of, or a determination, rather, of incompleteness. And so, the, uh, King Plaza Shopping Center has essentially appealed the staff's determination of incompleteness to the city council, and for that reason, it's before you tonight. Having said that, um, we're obviously, uh, willing to answer any questions you have. And, um, yeah, that's, that's essentially our presentation.
Thank you, Michael, um, I guess I want to start off with, um, my colleagues on council, if y'all have any questions or comments before we go ahead and go on to public comment or other folks, okay, Vice Mayor Ray Buenaventura.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so I, I read over the staff report and I had a question, uh, several questions, actually, so. In, in my understanding, that the reason why, uh, staff has deemed it incomplete, um, was because basically that there has been no, um, uh, agreement or signing off, if you will, of, um, Classic Bowl, is that, is that correct, Michael?
That's essentially correct.
Okay. Now, in terms of trying to get, uh, uh, this done, meaning trying to complete the, uh, application. Um, what, what do you know with respect to the attempts to try to get some kind of agreement or cooperation with Classic Bowl? What, what do you know of, uh, what steps have been taken to, uh, try to resolve it that way?
Well, the owners of King Plaza have reached out to the Classic Bowl ownership, I believe. Um, a letter was sent, uh, with certified mail, and when the King Plaza, the application was sent to the city staff, I believe it included, um, evidence of that.
Okay, and then, so what, I, I guess what I'm wondering is, if, if that, if that letter was, was sent and there's been contact, what has been the response of Classic Bowl to that letter or to that contact?
It's our understanding from the owners of King Plaza that there has been no response from the owners of Classic Bowl.
Okay, and, um, in, in reviewing, uh, the, 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 the report and what's been going on here, um, how long has this been an issue with Classic Bowl and the owners of King Plaza with respect to the parking situation?
It's been quite some time, I, I'd, I'd be kind of guessing at that answer, but it's been several years.
Several years, and, and, okay, and then, um, it, during the several years that this has been, uh, at issue, have there been any progress in terms of trying to resolve, uh, the parking situation between both, uh, parties?
I'm not sure how much at liberty I would be to comment on that, and, um, it would appear to the city staff that there has not been progress made. Um, I don't know if, if that opinion's shared by the owners of either property, though.
Okay, um, yeah, so, so, well, thank you, Michael, I, I think, Mayor, what I'm interested in hearing is, uh, from the applicant, uh, and from Classic Bowl, uh, I think it would be, I would like to hear what has been going on, what, what, uh, has been the issue? I mean, I know what the issue is, it's clear from the report, there's a parking issue, but I want to, uh, flush out and understand, uh, what, why hasn't the, the parties been able to resolve this issue? And what steps, uh, are, are needed that the council can do to move this thing forward? So, um, Mayor, I, I think we should, we should hear from both parties, I think we should start with the applicant. Oh, I can't hear you.
Yeah, before that, um, I'll, let me just get to, uh, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, then we'll open it up to both, um, parties. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, just a point of note, I believe, uh, well, I don't believe, but, um, the vice mayor has, uh, basically asked questions that I was going to ask as well, so subsequently, rather than be redundant, I will withdraw my hand at this time, my questions have been answered, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, let's go ahead and open it to applicants, so I see a hand with, um, Jeannie Ho.
I actually, uh, Mayor, I am Fogarty representing Jeannie Ho, and
Sorry about that.
I don't know why her name's on, on my photo also. Oh, good, so, okay, good, thank you. There has been, well, the, the five years worth of negotiations between the parties, including four attempts at mediation, and still, this hasn't been resolved. The problem with the city, uh, requiring the participation of a neighboring property owner is that they won't come to the table, they won't participate. After five years of trying to get participation, five years of appearing in court, and five years of settlement conference, and five years of mediation, there's been no resolution. The problem is that the owners of King Plaza Center cannot control, cannot make the owners of Classic Bowling do anything, they have no authority to do that. The city has authority to require their participation of them, but, but the, the owners of King Plaza Center cannot require the participation of Classic Bowling. So, it's futile to continue to demand that the owners of King Plaza Center, when dealing with their own property, continue to demand that they get the owners of Classic Bowl to participate, they're just stymied. They can't do it, so the zoning ordinance calls for a parking management plan. To the best knowledge of everyone involved, there's been no parking management plan that we've found that was formally approved by the city, so the owners of King Plaza Center are trying to comply with the requirements of the ordinance and the, with, without cooperation of the neighboring property owner. Now, I have to make, uh, something else very clear, and that is, we provided proof to the city that there is no recorded easement, there is no recorded right for the owners of Classic Bowling to determine what happens on the neighbor's property, there is nothing in the record. And that's after five years of litigation and discovery in litigation. That's after five years of going through the documents that the city has produced. That's after going through, uh, search for, in, and a title guarantee, all of which we've provided to the city. Now, you did receive, uh, communication from their attorney, uh, today, saying he had no idea that this was on the agenda or even being considered. The fact of the matter is, December twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-one, the owners of King Plaza Center sent this exact parking management plan to the owners of Classic Bowling and said, "We want your participation, we want to know what you think of this." There was no response. Think about that, there was no response, and they've known about it for six months, almost exactly six months, December twenty-eighth to June twenty-seventh. So, to further require, in order to deem this application complete, that people who will not respond, participate in order to hear this matter, to try to resolve this, on behalf of the city, for, on behalf of everybody who uses the shopping center, is futile. Let the owners of Classic Bowl speak when it comes time to make the decision about whether or not the parking management plan is approved, but the parking management plan will never get before the city unless it's deemed complete. So, we're asking that the council move this forward by having the staff deem it complete, and if the owners of Classic Bowl then want to speak to it, they will have an opportunity to speak to it. At this point in time, continuing the matter just continues their lack of response. So, we ask that you deem this application complete, so we can move on to actually taking action about whether or not the parking management plan will help to resolve the conflicts in the shopping center. Thank you, we appreciate the opportunity to make the presentation to you.
Thank you, Ms. Fogarty, um, I know we have, um, people, um, in attendance that want to speak as well, um, can we open it up to, um, our, our guests to speak? We have, I guess, I, do I hand this off to Leilani?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we open the public hearing at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, got you, all those in favor say aye.
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 For those members of the public who wish to comment on this item, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. When you hear your name called, you will receive a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum two minutes to speak, when your two minutes have been reached, please wrap up your comments. I see three hands raised. We have four hands raised with the last one being Ted. Manila Market, please go ahead and unmute.
Hello. Hello, my name's Peter Quat, can you hear me? Yeah, my name's Peter Quat, uh, I'm the owner of Manila Oriental Market, Daily City, for King Plaza, thirty ye. And, uh, I have the big problem about the parking lot, I have a lot of customer complaint, no space to look, they can't no space. To the landlord, the parking is a big problem, a lot of customers coming to me, it's like, hey, your parking's big trouble. No space to, to park, and they have to go away. But thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have John.
Hello, my name is John Fitzgerald, I'm not sure if Mark Hudek, who is my colleague, is on the, uh, on the line as well. I, I just had a couple of comments, I, I've represented DBP Investments, who is the owner of the property? Classic Bowl is not the owner of the property, Classic Bowl leases the property from DBP Investments. And what Ms. Fogarty neglected to tell you, this case has been in litigation for over seven years, it's scheduled to be in trial in November of this year. The dispute is about an easement agreement, and a mutual easement agreement where each side could use the other side's parking. It was in place for many years until, uh, King Plaza decided unilaterally to repudiate it. That is what is an issue before the court in November of this year. Yes, we, the idea that we haven't responded to any letters, it's simply not true, we've had many mediations, and they've been unsuccessful, we've had interim agreements, only to have those interim agreements repudiated by King Plaza. The issue in the case is the validity of this easement agreement that's been around for almost twenty years. Now, King Plaza wants to change the parking arrangement, we're eager to work with King Plaza, and we've tried to, I can't disclose what, uh, occurs during the mediation, but we've attempted to do that for seven long years. And the idea of using the city council as a bit of an end round to accomplish something that they cannot do in litigation is offensive to me. And what Ms. Fogarty said, frankly, I hate to be disparaging about our lack of response to this, is simply not accurate, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next, we have Ling Nam.
Hello. Hi, yes, uh, I'm Brandon Lim from, uh, Ling Nam, and I am a tenant from, uh, King Plaza. And just to speak on the parking issue, um, we've been open for a couple of months now, and I'm there at the store almost every day, and customers come up to me and just complain about the lack of parking that's available, and especially on the weekends, you know, we have a lot of customers coming to buy our products, and they have to result to leaving, or, you know, getting more people to come in, uh, just to buy our products for them. So, it's a really big issue, um, and that's one of the main complaints that I've been getting. Um, I have at least one to two people, um, coming to me and just, you know, complaining about the parking, and, uh, it's really affecting our business, um, especially with, you know, the COVID that's been going on, and, um, uh, that is all, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And last, we have last called speaker Ted.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, hi, I'm the owner of Spin and Drive Laundromat, and, um, I would like to highlight the parking issue challenges that we've been dealing for the last, uh, five years. Um, we hear a lot of complaints from our customers on daily basis, and there are a lot of weekends where it's very, it's been very difficult for anybody to find any place to park, where customers come in and they circle around the parking few times, and then maybe they get lucky to find a place to park, or they may just give up, give up and go somewhere else, it's been very challenging, um, and I'm sure all the other businesses are, uh, feeling the same way, and, um, it's, it's been very, very difficult for, uh, our business to, uh, depend on, uh, customers that come in, that there might be the possibility of losing those customers, because they can't waste the time, uh, keep on looking for something, some parking, and they cannot find it. So, um, there, basically, our, uh, there are a lot of times when, um, there are tournaments, there are parties, birthday parties, sometimes at, at the bowling alley that takes the, the whole day, or most of the day. There are, uh, weekends, there are, uh, seasonal issues where, you know, when schools are out, holidays are very difficult to deal with those as well. So, we're, with that being said, I think, uh, parking need to be, uh, addressed and, uh, fixed, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Leilani, um, can I get a motion to close, um, the public hearing?
Glenn Sylvester, so move.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, Councilmember Justlyn Manalo, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I do have, uh, some questions, um, uh, there was, uh, conversation around, um, that this parking management was sent over to, um, is it DB, DBA, is it DBA, DBP, DPP, um, and there was no response for about, uh, six months. Um, it can staff, um, the staff was staff aware of that?
Uh, yes, we're, uh, just, there's, there's a lot in that sentence, uh, Councilmember, I was actually gonna look at who they sent the letter to. I don't want to say yes, um, without, uh, actually having all the facts.
Please do, uh, do your, your research if you need to, if, if you're pulling up something, um, yeah.
I was just gonna look and see. Who exactly that was sent to, I have the certified mail letter here somewhere.
Thank you.
It was, it was to, it was to, uh, sent to DBP Investments at nine hundred.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, and, um, and so there was no response in regards to the parking management, since what I'm hearing is of December of last year. Um, so that's quite some time, um, hearing that that was sent during, and thank you for that confirmation, Michael. Also, um, I think it, it was important to hear from the community members that came on board today. Um, especially, um, I, I know Manila Oriental Market, it's, uh, a market that, um, many uh, utilize from the community, um, and they actually have, uh, really affordable prices, um, as far as, you know, um, vegetables, poultry, et cetera, um, and hearing that, uh, folks are having a hard time to park. I think it, it I think it, it concerns me, because I know that I probably have tried doing that in the past, and others, and then hearing from Ling Nam, which is their famous star bread. I'm sure a lot of people are drawn to that small business and being able to be revived, and I know, you know, if people don't know, that the star bread is a special anomaly that people come out for, and that they are also having issues with parking. That, that, that is concerning to me, I think that it's important that there needs to be opportunities for communities to be able to go to these small businesses that are the fabric of our, our cities, and I appreciate those that have come out this evening, also to the owner of the laundromat. I think especially even after COVID, we know that, you know, our small businesses have suffered, and I think that it's important to hear from even the small businesses in this part of town, and their struggle in regards to their customers finding parking, so I just want to thank those that have also, you know, come to join us this, this evening at city council. That was my main question, I wanted to know on the confirmation of who it was sent to, as far as if it was sent to DPP. And what I'm hearing is that there was no response in regards to the parking management plan that was sent over, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Justin Manalo, we have councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Michael, in the parking management plan, I know that they, when they had submitted it, it was given over, and could you just go over basics of it?
Know that we're really doing that tonight, councilmember.
Okay.
Yeah, this is to make a determination of whether the application should proceed to actually have that conversation, if.
But I do know that they've been working on it and attempting to try to reach out and partner to get input from DDP, as was mentioned prior, on several occasions, and that this has caused the economic hardship for some of the businesses in that plaza that appears, and which in turn goes to the city, which in turn is for Ms. Ho and for everyone. And that something needs to be done, if we, if this is going on for over, well, five or more years. So, would it be possible to ask Ms. Fogarty a couple of questions? Hi, Ms. Fogarty. Thank you for being here.
Certainly, councilmember, what, what, may I answer for you?
So, and you're, because I think you've been in front of, have you been with them from the beginning during this issue?
I was not with them for the first two years of this issue, and that's probably the distinction between how long Mr. Fitzgerald's been with his clients and how long I've been with mine.
Okay, but in your experience, and with the, without going into details, I know you can't discuss the details when you have mediation, but it appears that if it's ongoing in front of, you guys go in front of mediation with a judge?
Yes, retired judge.
A retired judge, and, and then you get sent back out with nothing, nothing occurring, correct?
That's, that's correct. There's been, no, there's been no agreement between the parties despite four attempts.
Okay, so this, that's, that's, hence the length of time, and the, what do you call it? The attempt on parties to try to negotiate, but nothing happens. So, Ms. Ho and you have made several attempts.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right, I think that's all I have at this time, and thank you, Ms. Fogarty, and I believe, through the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Fitzgerald.
DBP has not responded to these inquiries, and of course we have, we have, there have been expert witnesses, parking experts who worked together to come up with a parking plan to submit ultimately, not only to the court to settle the case, but to the city council. King Plaza has rejected those plans, even plans that have been jointly developed to the experts. And as far as responding, well, of course we have, we responded in the context of the litigation and mediations. We have had interim agreements to see how they work, to try to resolve this outside of the, outside of litigation. So, but the idea, we did receive this December twenty eighth letter, we did respond to it. In the context of litigation, we responded to their then attorney, because these are also CCNRs and their parking plans, and we've tried to work out something, and to date, we haven't. But to try to resolve it here, while we still have an outstanding issue of an easement agreement that we're, frankly, we're fighting over, it is something that we've tried to work it out, but I really do object to the notion that we haven't responded, we have, we've responded to everything.
Okay.
Context of litigation.
Yeah, Mr. Fitzgerald, so my thing is, is point being that your, your response has been litigation, your response has not been to try to do the parking management plan.
Right.
That's, that's only been your response is litigation, not really trying to work it out.
It is trying to work out a plan, a complete settlement of the entire dispute between the parties, which obviously contemplates a parking plan, there is a parking problem there. And the problem, what the parking plan proposed by King Investments calls for the bowling alley, our, our tenant, to have a limited number of parking places. So that the folks who use the bowling alley, that includes young people and old people, won't have enough parking according to their parking plan, hence the dispute, they say, well, it needs, it's a mutual easement, it's a sharing of parking.
Yeah.
So that if you were to put a one hour parking place or a two hour parking place throughout the center, for example, that isn't sufficient time for seniors to use Classic Bowl.
So, with all due respect, it seems like you're responding to some of the things right now, but I would like to have a chance for Ms. Fogarty to reply through the mayor, go ahead, Ms. Fogarty.
And I just have one, just a logistical thing, my colleague, Mr. Hudek, apparently is trying to raise his hand, he can't get on, I don't know what the issue is, but I just mentioned that.
Yeah, for right now, I'm just doing the questioning, because then my other colleagues, thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, but I would like Ms. Fogarty to respond.
Thank you.
Ms. Fogarty, go, go right ahead.
I have to, first of all, say that the responses have been no, that, that's the response. So when I say there's been no response, the only response we've gotten is no. Now, we have both been trying to work on resolving this, we have both gotten experts who came up with ideas, but the ideas have been rejected. I also have to take issue with Mr. Fitzgerald's statement that the parking management plan includes limiting the number of spaces for the bowling alley, it does not. All it does is it sets less than half of the parking spaces as timed parking, but it makes them available to anyone who wants to park there, who has a reason to be in the shopping center. So, that's, that's a little bit misleading to say that there's a limit to the number of parking spaces. I have to say that the bowling alley may feel that that limits the number of parking spaces for their patrons, but in fact, their patrons can park in any space, it's just asking that some of them move within a certain time period. And as I say, that's for less than half of the available parking spaces, and there are lots of other businesses in that shopping center, and their customers need to park as well. So, the, the parking management plan, I won't go into all the details, because this isn't appropriate right to do that, but the parking management plan treats every person who wants to park in that shopping center in exactly the same way. There's no limit to who can park where, the only limit is as to, first of all, the ADA parking spaces, you have to be disabled to park there, but other than those parking spaces, anyone can use them. It's just that certain spaces are set aside for time limited parking, as is done in the city's own parking in commercial districts, because it's found that's a way to turn over the spaces to give more customers an opportunity to, to go to their favorite businesses there.
Thank you, Ms. Fogarty, to make it fair for all.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, this time.
Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, here we go. Mr. Longhausen, you, earlier in your presentation, you made mention as to who the landowner was in that particular area. Would you verify or validate, is it King Plaza who owns the entire parcel, or just partial?
King Plaza owns the entire parcel, not including the property on which Classic Bowl is situated, that's owned by the DBP Investments.
Got it, got it, thank you so much, and I'd first like to start off with both parties, Ms. Fogarty and Mr. Fitzgerald. I say, I want to say I commend the work that has been done thus far to try to come up with a solution, and from what I'm hearing, most of the time, it's no, or we can't come to an agreement, even with the use of experts. The, the issue, I'm glad that I received clarification on the seven years versus five years, and if you ask me, even if we were to be conservative and say five years, I think five years is too long. You know, given what's going on, our community, and et cetera. Ms. Fogarty, you brought out additional information regarding the parking spaces that's available, and I see additional information as to timed parking. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, is it true that there is no easement recorded at this time as to CCNRs and the use of parking spaces? Is that correct?
I, yes, councilmember, that is correct, there is no recorded easement.
Okay, thank you so much, so I'm of the opinion of being a good neighbor, and based upon what I'm hearing thus far, I used to bowl, and I've been there, and I've done that, and I know at a minimum, a league generally lasts two to two and a half hours. What is the issue that I found is on certain days, say you may have parties, or on the weekends where tournaments are in play, tournaments can start as early as eight or nine in the morning and go through ten at night. And I'm concerned, in the absence of a parking management plan, where is the equity here? So, I thank everyone on board for your updates, and given the information I've received thus far, I will be ready to make or to support any particular motion based upon the facts that I've received as far, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I may just respond to Ms. Fogarty's comment again.
Go right ahead, Ms. Fitzgerald.
Thank you. The easement that we have is, it's not recorded, but it doesn't have to be recorded in order to be binding on the parties. We have as much right to the property owned by King Plaza as King Plaza has rights to the property owned by DBP. And I want to echo councilmember Glenn Sylvester, there's a plan out there that should work. We just want to make sure that we have an opportunity, the first we heard about this meeting, so we're clear, was two o'clock this afternoon. That's the first time we heard anything about the council meeting. And we just want an opportunity to provide, if you will, our side of the case, everything that has occurred in terms of trying to resolve it, and to obtain a parking plan that makes sense for all parties. You know, the, I can't remember, maybe it was this councilmember, DGV, that's a tough one, sorry. The composition of the shopping center, it used to be video machine, you know, places where you buy a video are on a video, now they're restaurants, and we have had both sides of that experts work on it, and it's not just, it's not just equal access to parking, it's, how long will that park, it's three hours, how about a three hour, four hour for certain times and days? What do we do with the employees to park? We need to find a place for employees, shuttles, these are all things that we work in with, and the only thing that I would ask for is just an opportunity, because, tell you the truth, we heard of something at two o'clock this afternoon, we had to scramble to be here today. And just make sure we have an opportunity to present our plan if it's competing, and, and understand that this issue about the the easement is a complicated one, and the reason why it's gone on for seven years is we've had interim agreements that have gone on for six months, nine months, and a year, to see if they work, because we've tried to resolve it, that's why this case has been going on for seven years, it hasn't been seven years of active litigation. That's the only thing that I ask, and whatever happens today, is that we be given an opportunity to come back and, and provide counsel, city counsel, and the planning department. We have been in touch with this legal side, Zemrak, who I believe it was, that's all we ask, that we have an opportunity to present our side of this. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Fitzgerald, I have the vice mayor on the floor, go ahead, vice mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Michael, let me ask you, what are the next steps? Meaning that if this council voted to deem the application complete, what is the next step, what happens next?
The next, the next thing we would do is get ready for public hearings. We would prepare for sending out three hundred foot notice, posting site, placing newspaper ads, this sort of thing, so that we could, the city council, the planning commission actually would consider it first, would consider in a public hearing, in a public forum, the merits of the proposed amendments to plan development, I think it's forty six, forty seven.
And so both sides get to present their respective arguments with respect to the merits of the plan?
They would, any member of the public, including, well, yes, both parties here tonight.
Okay. So, on that note, I would make a motion to deem the application complete and move this forward to the next step. I don't think we need to get into the merits of the parking management plan. I think the issue is that this, this has been an issue for the, for the community for seven years, and it's just, it's getting worse, and I think we need to do something about it, it's in the city's authority to manage the city, manage where we can, and so that's my motion.
Justin Manalo.
We have a second by councilmember Justin Manalo. So.
We have a roll call vote on that, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I was about to ask you that. Thank you, Rose, councilmember Glenn Sylvester, I see that you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you so much, I'll provide a comment when I give my vote, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilmember, the city clerk can provide a roll call. Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Um, Ms. City Clerk, can you provide a roll call?
Mr. Buen Ventura.
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Uh, Glenn Sylvester, aye, with the comment. Um, I, I'm happy to move forward. Uh, I think um we'll no longer kick the can down the road. I think this is an opportunity to bring both parties to the table and uh get them to talk. And uh that's what we're looking for. The resiliency and the fluid nature of our communities to include King Plaza, things change, and that's what I mean by fluid. Uh, new businesses prop up, what may have existed before changes, and it changes with the community. And I hope moving forward that uh both sides will take this into consideration. Thank you.
Dr. Rod.
Aye. All right, so, thank you for everybody that attended um this item. Um, we're moving on to item number thirteen. Appropriate funds and award construction contract for the twenty twenty twenty-one Ceramonti Slurry Seal and Daly City Crosswalk Enhancement Project. And I'll hand it off to Director Richard Chu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to turn this over to Alex Yuan, uh who will give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Staff recommends that the city council approve the design documents for the twenty twenty twenty-one's Ceramonti Slurry Seal and Daly City Crosswalk Enhancement Project. Affirm the sequoia determination of categorical exemption. Accept uh accept all bids and award a construction contract for bid schedule A and bid schedule B to BSS International of West Sacramento in the amount of two million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, in addition, authorize transfer of six hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and eight dollars of unexpended funds from the twenty eighteen nineteen street resurfacing, twenty nineteen twenty street resurfacing, and original Daly City Civic Center uh Slurry Seal project. Uh, appropriate two hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars of unallocated Measure W funds to fully fund the project and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary contracts to complete the project. Since nineteen ninety-eight, Daly City Public Works has undertaken a comprehensive street pavement preventative maintenance program. The cornerstone of this program is the annual street slurry seal project as the single most cost-effective means to preserve a pavement's condition and thereby reduce long-term pavement operations and maintenance costs. Streets slurry sealing replaces fine aggregate stripped from the pavement surface, reduces water penetration into the road base, and thereby reduces base failures and the resultant damage that is more costly to repair. Streets selected to be surface sealed are based on several factors, including the city's seven-year master plan, the city's computer-based pavement management system, visualization of, uh visual observations of the streets by public work staff, and other upcoming or associated work such as utility repairs uh and bike lane installations. The construction bid documents include slurry sealing approximately thirteen point six miles of city streets in the Ceramonti area. And this is shown on the twenty twenty twenty-one uh project location map. Uh, in addition, in October twenty twenty, the city council accepted and appropriated transportation for Clean Air County Program Manager Funds in the amount of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the Daly City Crosswalk Enhancement Project. The TFCA funds are generated by fees levied on motor vehicles by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District and are used to implement projects with the goal of reducing air pollution from motor vehicles. The Daly City Crosswalk Enhancement Project will install high-visibility crosswalks along four major corridors, June Perisera Boulevard, Callan Boulevard, Geller Boulevard, and King Drive. These corridors are part of the city's Vision Zero High Injury Network, where a high concentration of fatalities or serious injuries or pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists occur. The project aims to increase pedestrian visibility and create more livable and safer pedestrian-friendly corridors for residents going to any of the activity centers along the corridors. High-visibility crosswalks are identified as tools by both the city's Vision Zero Action Plan and the pedestrian bicycle master plan to help increase the visibility of pedestrians at crosswalks. So going into the project itself, the construction bid documents were prepared in-house by the engineering staff with assistance of engineering interns. The project was advertised on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and three bids were received on June ninth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, the total bids ranged from two million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars to three million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Uh, determination of the lowest bidder, uh lowest responsible bidder was based on the lowest combined total of the bid schedule A and bid schedule B. Uh, bid schedule A being the Ceramonti Slurry Seal Project and bid schedule B being the Daly City Crosswalk Enhancement Project. BSS International, Inc. of West Sacramento, California, has been in business since nineteen seventy-four. This bidder holds the required Class A contractor's license, which is current and in good standing. The contractor successfully performed the work, similar work, uh for other public agencies such as the city of Elk Grove, the town of Apple Valley, and the county of Alameda. The contractor has also successfully completed Daly City's uh twenty nineteen twenty Crocker Hillside uh June Perisera and San Pedro Road Slurry Seal Project in twenty twenty, as well as the twenty twenty, uh, and the twenty nineteen twenty twenty Original Daly City Civic Center Slurry Seal in twenty twenty-one. The low bid for this project is twelve point two percent higher than the engineer's estimated cost. Uh, in the Bay Area's current construction industry market, increased cost for skilled labor and raw materials has affected the bid prices of qualified contractors. If bid schedule A and bid schedule B is awarded as recommended, construction is anticipated to commence in July twenty twenty and be completed by October twenty, oh, sorry, July twenty twenty-two and be completed by October twenty twenty-two. As previously indicated, striping changes are included in the design to incorporate Vision Zero strategies on the city's high injury network within the project area. These changes include adjusting the location of the limit line to be behind curb ramps, adjusting lane lines to be, uh, for better alignment, installing high-visibility crosswalks and bike buffers along major corridors, and adding green bike sharrows at select locations throughout the city. Uh, in particular, northbound Callan Boulevard between Hickey Boulevard and Wembley Drive will feature a new separated bikeway with adjacent on-street parallel parking. The total estimated construction cost for the twenty twenty twenty-one Ceramonti Slurry Seal and Daly City Crosswalk Enhancement Project is three million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, which includes the two hun, uh, two million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-dollar construction contract and an additional five hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars for the construction contingency, inspection, and contract administration. Two million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars is available in Transportation Fund CIP project accounts seventeen three one two, six one nine, seventeen three one two, five oh two, and seventeen three one two, nine one six for the Ceramonti uh Slurry Seal and Daly City Crosswalk Enhancement Project. However, an additional nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars is needed above the previously allocated funds to fully fund the project. This action will transfer unexpended funds in the amount of six hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and eight dollars from Transportation Fund CIP project accounts seventeen three one two, six one one, seventeen three one two, six one two, and seventeen three one two, six four nine, and appropriate two hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars of unallocated Measure W funds to fully fund the project. At this time, staff recommends that the city council approve the design documents for the twenty twenty twenty-one Ceramonti Slurry Seal and Daly City Crosswalk Enhancement Project. Affirm the sequoia determination of categorical exemption. Accept all bids and award a construction contract to, for bid schedule A and bid schedule B to BSS International, Inc. of West Sacramento uh in the amount of two million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Authorize transfer of six hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and eight dollars of unexpended funds from the twenty eighteen nineteen street resurfacing, twenty nineteen twenty street resurfacing, and original Daly City Civic Center Street Slurry Seal projects. Appropriate two hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars of unallocated Measure W funds to fully fund the project and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary contracts to complete the project. Staff is available to answer any further questions. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, City Council members.
Thank you, Alex. That was a mouthful. You did a great job. Um, I see Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. Um, Alex, uh, great job. I uh definitely see, see the projects that has happened. Matter of fact, one happened near my neighborhood, and that's uh uh near San Pedro and um uh going up the mountain towards Guadalupe just prior to that. I was trying to add up your numbers, and you you're asking for an approval of two point seven million, you you know, which I don't have a uh a problem with that. I'm uh basically, that's the city's outtake, and when adding up your numbers, I get one point seven. Uh, I'm wondering how much of that, or do we have any augmented funds that have come from uh the Traffic Safety Grant or NHTSA?
So none, none from NHTSA or the Traffic Safety Grant in particular. Uh, these, this project's being funded by other uh CIP projects that are in the Transportation Fund that are of similar nature. So, for example, the uh recent sl, uh, street resurfacing projects that had unexpended funds, as well as the original Daly City project, uh Slurry Seal project.
So is there any reason why uh we cannot get any of those grant funds from NHTSA or the uh Traffic Safety Highway Grants?
That one I would have to do more research on to see if that would be eligible, if we can actually look for that type of grant for this project.
Well, yeah, I think it is eligible because it deals with anything that has to do with our streets. And uh I know that uh quite a bit has been allocated, something in the tune of, say, the NHTSA alone, up to twenty-four million dollars for the uh s, uh state of California. And I'm not even talking about the traffic safety uh uh highway safety grants. Um, my second question is, you had made mention about resurfacing a street that needs resurfacing badly, and that's Callan Boulevard, and to install a uh bicycle uh lane there. So do we have plans to deal with the overnight parking of big trucks that parks along that boulevard? Are we going to remove them, or they can no longer park there because to put in a bicycle lane, uh, we need some clearance?
So it's going between, it's Callan Boulevard on the northbound direction between Hickey Boulevard and Wembley Drive. So on that side, there are a lot of vehicles that park for the use of Geller Park primarily, I would say.
Okay, okay.
And then there is an issue with the vehicles that need to be temporarily relocated for the the actual project itself. We will put adequate signage to inform anyone on the streets uh that are parking there that there is going to be a project upcoming. So to pro, provide forewarning to uh temporarily move vehicles as needed to get that the project done.
Uh, yeah, got it. You, uh, you folks, uh, Public Works do a good job in notification of the um residents in the area. Well, I, I guess I was mistaken. I'm talking about Callan Boulevard, if we have any plans be uh by the cemetery there, that street. And uh do we have any plans for that?
So that part of the pro, uh, that part of Callan Boulevard is not part of this project. However, it may be a part of a future uh street resurfacing project or slurry seal project.
Okay, uh, that answers my question. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Great job also, Alex. Very detailed. And uh thank you for giving us the, all the numbers and rundown. And he did answer the question about the NHTSA and the grants, because I know you guys are always looking into the monies and seeing where we can get safety. So given the fact that, like you said, the Vision Zero is in play here and everything else, that you put it all together in engineering and to the interns, they did a really good job. And I see the enhancements are creating more safety on the roads um for vehicles, pedestrians, um, and trying to figure out where to put those bicycle paths. I get it. And like Councilmember Sylvester was speaking of, right by that cemetery, I don't even know what we're going to do. Maybe in the future, bring that back, about those commercial parking. I have to agree with him because it could be at like a hazard um if we want people to keep cycling. It seems like cycling is picking up now, and um we're trying to get people in commute.org and the, out of the cars, cycle, even e-bikes. So um maybe that'll just be in the future, but thank you. Great job, and please thank the engineering and the interns. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Chu.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Great, um.
Thank you, Mayor.
I guess we'll go ahead and see.
I'd like to make a motion, most, Mr. Mayor, that we approve.
Oh, I see Councilmember um Justin Manalo. Before we um proceed, I see ju, um, Councilmember Justin Manalo's hand up.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I just want to uh say thank you to the staff for the extensive presentation. I know very well that our community um really um uh enjoys our streets being uh paved. And I remember even speaking to um a constituent and uh that, that said, oh, well, when, when do you know you're in Daly City, or when do you know you're in San Francisco, right? And usually it's the signs that say uh with, with, that, with the blue signs. But actually, um, one thing mentioned was actually look down at the streets. And you'll notice the difference. And so um I just want to say thank you for the amazing work staff continues to do um around our streetscape, also ensuring our pedestrian safety, um which is so important um as we are a densely populated um city in, in, and, and so I just wanted to say thank you without um ending the evening to say thank you to uh Alex and all, all the staff that continue to work diligently on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. I guess, I believe we have a first and a second. Um, can we get a roll call, please, Ms. City Clerk?
If I may ask, who did the second?
It was Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni.
Thank you. Mr. Buen Ventura.
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye. All right. Great, thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers.
Thank you. All right. Okay. There. Moving on to public appearances and oral communications, I'll hand this over to Leilani.
In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the city council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If any additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the city council. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. I see three hands raised with the last speaker calling in by phone. First speaker, please unmute. Judith. Judith, if you're joining by phone, please press star six unmute.
I clicked unmute.
Okay, we can hear you now.
Oh, fabulous.
Your two minutes have begun. Thank you. Judith, you can begin.
I don't see the timer. Okay. Good evening. This is former City Councilmember Judith Christensen. I am calling in tonight to talk about some problems we're having with campaign sites. Ever since 2003, I have been a watchdog on this issue. It is against the law to place campaign signs anywhere on public land. That means city, state, bar, anything like that. And I've been out driving around and I've seen one candidate who's breaking the rules currently. And I want to just share that. It's Shirley, I don't know how to say the last name, Katur. And there are signs on Mission Street, which is State Highway 82. That's illegal. There are signs on the city land right across the street from the Westlake Shopping Center between John Daly and North Mayfair. There's that strip of land that belongs to the city. That sign needs to be removed. There's also a sign on the freeway, 280 freeway fence at Sullivan at where Seton's driveways come down. So those signs need to be removed. I know that in the past, I know with actually Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, he had a very enthusiastic supporters in a previous election and they put some signs on city property. He was contacted. He immediately took them down and showed that personal level of responsibility. I expect to see that same immediate response from anyone who has posted signs at this time and that means Ms. Katur as well.
Two minutes have been reached.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jane.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Jane Stoll. I'm a member of Warm Water Wellness, a group that advocates for warm water therapy pools. I recently requested that the council pass a resolution calling on Sutter Health to reopen the Mickelson Therapy Pool, the only warm water therapy pool on the peninsula. The Mackey Mickelson Arthritis and Rehabilitation Center in San Mateo was built 25 years ago with $4 million donated by the community. Centrally located on El Camino Real, indoors and accessible, it has all the equipment needed for a therapy pool, such as a ramp for wheelchairs, a hoist to lift people into the water, 93-degree water, and much more. Pregnant women, children with special needs, people recovering from joint or heart surgery, stroke victims, anyone with chronic pain. The water enabled them to walk, exercise, grow, and stay strong. My husband used the pool for more than 20 years and for many, it has been a lifesaver. Unfortunately for them, Sutter Health permanently closed this facility a year ago, citing a focus on acute care. Over the past 15 years, Sutter Health has also closed more than 20 programs that benefited the community. As the second largest city in San Mateo County with 105,000 citizens, 18% of whom are seniors, it is vital that Daly City join Millbrae, San Mateo, Bowling game, Foster City, the Board of Supervisors, and others in calling for Sutter Health to reopen the Mickelson Pool. With adults age 55 plus estimated to increase to 25% by 2030 and one in four of those being disabled, an accessible therapy pool in the county becomes essential for wellness and quality of life. Any one of us might need a therapy pool at any time. You may or may not become disabled, but it's
Two minutes have been reached.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Unless we have a speaker joining by phone, please press star six to unmute.
Yeah, so what did we talk about last time? Departures? What's going on, man? Somebody sounds a little congested tonight. Sounds a little bit better than me, though. Get some cold medicine, kid. Rose, you're doing a great job. You're up for Employee of the Year. What's Big Ugly doing up there now? What's going on, man? How come you haven't cleared out, man? I think we had that conversation last time. Ray's gone. Ray's like hiding underneath his desk or something. I don't know what the hell is going on. Yeah, get those signs down. Make sure Sylvester, you take your signs down because you're gone, you're leaving. We need Cheryl and we need Hamilton's mom in there. By the way, they canceled tomorrow night's meeting. I don't know why. We're trying to figure that out. You guys got to get this together. You guys got to pack it up. I think we're getting tired of seeing you. Haven't seen Gonzo. Where's Gonzo? What's she, I didn't see her on the video tonight. We joined a little bit late. Couldn't get the other guys on, but yeah, you got to pack it up, Sylvester. You know, you're a disgrace. You're an embarrassment. You're nothing. You're a slob. I mean, you put your curtain up when the community is talking. What's wrong with you, man? Don't you have any respect? Respect for the community, respect for the city, respect for the badge? Where's your community leadership? Get the hell out of my city, man. Leave. I'm tired of seeing you with you and Gonzo and Rod and Ray. I mean, you guys, Ray's sleeping at the meetings, Rod's making racist comments. You guys are trash, man. Absolute trash. You're a disgrace to John Daly. You're a disgrace to the city. You're a disgrace to the seal. You took a dagger and you put it through the, you put it through the seal, man. You guys are filth. You're vile. You're scum. Get out of my city, man. Just leave. Pack it up. We got to do better, man. Especially you, Sylvester. What a, what a slob. What a pig. Just get the hell out.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, so we're getting close to the end of the agenda here. So reports, item number 14. Oh, my bad. Let me go back up. Appointments. Do we have any Board of Commission members, membership commitment appointments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to reappoint Angela Legarta to the Library Board of Trustees. She had taken a leave of absence, but the community work is calling her back. She's been at an exceptional Board of Trustee. When she onboarded, really hands-on and always thinking of ways to innovate. And so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Angela Legarta to the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
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 Welcome back, Angela. Are there any other appoint, appointments? All right. Seeing none, let's go to item 14, Council Committee Reports. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended two meetings the past couple of weeks. The first one I'll start with is the Office of Emergency Services. You know, that consists of a JPA with all cities in San Mateo County. And based upon population, each city has to pay for services from the Office of Emergency Services. And I want to talk about the budget. The budget was passed. We have excess of $1.2 million in reserve. And to keep the cost low, they, we voted on utilizing $410,000 of those reserves. It's, and that's dispersed amongst the various cities in equal proportion as to what they pay. So Daly City, being the highest population in San Mateo County, is going to save quite a bit. And we hope to get that $410,000 back from the city and county of San Francisco because they put in, in the area of the SFO Airport, which is actually located in San Mateo County. Another issue came up regarding regional communications. And what I mean by regional communications outside of San Mateo County like FEMA, water, there seems to be a lack of communications with these agencies for emergencies that surfaces within any one of the cities in San Mateo County. I'll take, for example, Millbrae where they had extreme flooding. And it's tough to communicate with some of these outside organizations as to their responsibility. We've been shouldering most of it and we've been doing a lot of work, but it's been very difficult. The last item on OES is air filters. When I was online, I learned that the county of OES received 50 air filters. And I immediately put in a request to find out who are they going to? So I'm very happy to report that Daly City snagged 24 of them. That's 24 out of 50. And 10 of them is going to be put at our local libraries, whereas the other 14 is going to various community centers within Daly City. The next I'd like to report on CAL ID. CAL ID consists of basically our automated AFIS, Automated Fingerprint System, to which if you've ever been arrested before and if you're in that database, it'd be easy to identify you. We maintain those systems and as part of Daly City. And the recent budget has been passed. And what's new coming out of CAL ID is mobile AFIS units that will go out to law enforcement so that an officer on the field, if they need to obtain fingerprints, because normally you would have to pick up and take someone to a station, have them fingerprinted, and then wait for the results. Now they'll be able to do it by automation. And information is very important, especially when you're out on the field and how fast you can get that information. And that's what I have to report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me lower down my hand. I wanted to report on attending and representing at ABAQ for the Association of Bay Area Governance. And so, and joined a business meeting there. Also, there was, we voted on the proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 Operating Budget and Work Program. Also to the staff, if you need to support in regards to our Daly City housing element, they provide services. I think it's important if we need support on that to utilize the services that ABAQ provides. Those are the only committee meetings that I have, Mr. Mayor. But I do have some reports onto City Council.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. I have one City Council report to report on. And here, or Council Committee Report, sorry. So I attended the Pinita Clean Energy Meeting last Thursday. Here's a couple of highlights. PCE hired a new CFO, Christina Aligarh. And so grateful that they hired her. She's a childhood friend of mine that we both grew up in Southern California and it just feels like coming full circle that they, our PCE hired Christina as the new CFO. We also approved the fiscal year budget for 2022-2023. Along with the, trying to find a way to forecast. The economy is going to be a challenge in the next couple of years. So that's what we took in consideration. And then we had a discussion on reach codes and we're seeing more and more cities that are moving towards reach codes and more towards electrification. And glad to say that Daly City is one of the many cities. And we approved it, I think, I believe, last year, so we're good on that. Okay. Any other Council Committee Reports? Seeing none. Let's go to item 15, City Council Reports. Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to report on June 14th, the inaugural program of youth empowerment, entrepreneurship, and employment was at Daly City Hall and has a majority of Daly City youth. It was really amazing to see the young people from the Bay Shore and all over Daly City to participate in the program, to give them tools and real-life experience working at nonprofits, small business, or even city government. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that electrifying keynote. I'm sure that the youth always appreciate that. On June 15th, also wanted to extend another thank you to Bay Shore Board Member Joy Pilara Gutierrez, who retired. Joy Gutierrez-Pilares is an executive assistant at Kaiser Permanente and the current vice president for, well, she was the current vice president until she retired. She was a proud San Francisco Bay Area native who grew up in the South Market and later moved to Bay Shore and Daly City. Ms. Gutierrez is an alumni from the Bay Shore Elementary and also Jefferson Union High School District and thrive in both academics and athletics. During her nine years as a trustee, the district passed three significant measures that helped build the brand for new facilities. Measure C, 6 million to approve facilities, and Measure K and Measure S. She enjoys acts of service, bringing people together. And Joy often participates and advocates for events and causes that encourage equity, inclusion, and diversity. Also want to extend my best wishes to Superintendent Audra Pittman on her next journey to a different jurisdiction and her leadership on having a brand-new school. At that event, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Di Giovanni was present as well. Also wanted to share that was on the lines with the CTN nurses with Supervisor Canapa, who was also present, and with nurses who have been there for decades. When I say decades, it's not one decade, not two decades. It's actually three to four decades. Their sheer dedication on serving the patients throughout, whether it was pre-pandemic and now. It's really crucial to ensure that, you know, they garner the support that they need to continue. These nurses are the backbone of, I would say, CNN Hospital. And they really need to have a contract and support in that respect. Also, attended the San Mateo County API Task Force. It was created to address the needs of the API community in San Mateo County. It was wonderful to see Commissioner Manufo, who was present as well, representing for the Pacific Islanders community in the county to build empowerment, especially amongst the violence against in the county to build empowerment, especially amongst the violence against the API community that we continue to see. Um, also, I'm really happy to see that our staff on Juneteenth um was able to take that off. A year ago, President Biden signed legislation to establish Juneteenth as a national holiday, the first new federal holiday since Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. uh, uh, nearly four decades ago. So we know that Juneteenth marks a long, long, hard struggle of slavery and the subjugation and uh really needing to ensure that we continue to fight for uh real inclusive and equitable policies. There's really much more work to be done around justice um within the Black Indigenous People of Color communities. Uh, last year, I remembered bringing forth uh to Daly City to ensure that our staff um gets paid for this holiday. And this uh year, I was really um happy to see that um, we were able to commemorate Juneteenth with uh the staff um off. Um, and I think that's it. Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much uh for your time um uh on the dais. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Well, she gave a lot of details. Thank you, Councilmember Manalo, on the event. So I'll just keep it really short. And say it was honored being there with a board member, Joy Gutierrez-Pilare, for her retirement after nine years. Who's still a great, significant leader, uh even if she's not on the Bay Shore School District anymore. She continues to serve her community. And uh I know that it's not the end of that. But hopefully she'll take some much needed rest and well deserved. And she was one of the main uh persons that brought forth and fought with Cecil Owens, the, to get the new school. And she was in our council chambers at that time and it happened. And also the retirement, as was mentioned, Audra Pittman, who was also there nine years as well. She also fought to get that bond in our council chambers and that beautiful school still stands today. And that's our blessed Bay Shore. So I know that our council is a big supporter and I'm very gr- grateful that we do that all together. And so it was humble to be there. I'd like to allude to the fact of our Seaton Hospital with our Seaton nurses. It was a two-day strike. For the first time in history of Seaton Hospital, the nurses were forced to go on a two-day strike. Why do I say that? Because people are saying that it's about the pay. When you look at those numbers of what the media is putting out there, they were working sixteen hours a day during the COVID. That's the only reason you see those numbers. They are not doing that. They're fighting about patient safety. When you now go to the emergency room, I know you guys heard it and Dr. Rod also heard it directly from the nurses when he came the last time to speak, that they will tell you, there were sheets not available. There were no ancillary staff available to help the nurses. The nurses were changing the sheets. And people go into cardiac arrest in our, in a emergency room. We only have it so many. They can't retain them. So they've been fighting since December twenty twenty-one to get a contract from AHMC. And I get it. And they understood it when they knew when the transfer came for the bankruptcy. They knew what they were getting into. They, at that time, the nurses didn't ask for anything. But you do at least have to retain them. You can't have a hospital without nurses. We need them. Those doors need to stay open. The ninth floor is now closed. That's our skilled nursing facility. They say they took those patients over to the Coastside. But then I just recently found out from a nurse at Coastside, those patients did not go over there. Where are they and what happened to them? Eight floors closed. Eight floors, the geriatric psychiatric. A specialty care. It's actually one that makes money. So it doesn't make sense that you close down a floor that actually makes the money when they're saying they don't have the money. That made money. I don't know where those patients are either. But I do know that the nurses were given an option. There's specialty in their field. You either leave or you move on to some other place. So, and that's wrong to do to our nurses. This is our community hospital. If if you are stroke or any of that, the Kaiser patients actually come over there. These is really, really serious issues. We had many, many elected officials from other cities, South City, uh Ray Mueller um from Menlo Park. We had Diane Pappin. Um, as you know, Eddie Flores came and um to came to speak because we're in this together. And John Goodwin from Colma. This is very serious. And if anybody tells you they saved Seaton, this is not true. What really happened for COVID was that news, at least those beds. They leased the beds. If you hadn't leased those beds, Governor, during COVID, it saved our doors. Now we have to continue to fight because this is what we have in our community and we need to fight together. And I know that this council supports our healthcare. We support our nurses, our healthcare workers. Some of you and myself, we all have personal stories. I mean, Dr. Rod's mother in particular, um is very personal. So um, I think we continue to keep a watch and see, stay tuned in and see what's happening to the patients. And that is all we have and that's our, our Seaton. And we serve many, many communities surrounding and areas, including San Francisco. So that was one of the biggest things to me, to be there two days and see them. They they never left. They left, came back, left and came back, those nurses. And as a matter of fact, we were able to stop the buses. The buses did not cross the line. They're because they're union. The Sam Tran bus drivers. Teamsters came. Local thirty-nine came. And everybody joined together because we must do this together. So I want people to know that those nurses been there a long time. The staffing is really bad and we need to retain them. So thank you for the time. And I know uh, Dr. Rod, that's personal on your end as well. And it was mentioned why you were unable to be there, but someone did mention on your behalf. Just wanted to let you know. So thank you very much for that. And um, that's it for right now. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Uh, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Oh, you have to unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I forgot about sharing um about something very recently that I attended and I'm sorry, I forgot about that, Mr. Mayor, but I wanted to be able to share with everyone that um, on uh June twenty-fourth at the San Mateo Central Park uh stage, there was a rally for reproductive rights and um really shattering uh with what has happened in the Supreme Court. And so uh along with um Diane Pappin and Gina Pappin, um I was able to join um leaders around San Mateo County to be able to just be in community and really express whether it's anger, whether it's sadness, whether um, it feels um even just so many emotions on that morning. Um, but really also a sense of hope, seeing that there was a lot of young women um that were there to really uh rally together, use our voice and make sure that this, we are not silent on ensuring that we have a choice. Um, and the agency as, as women um to choose what over our bodies, right? And so um, I just wanted to share that um it was, I I was thankful to uh be in community and space at that moment um with others or a- along with um those, those leaders that came together. Um, and Supervisor Canapa also came from North County to go to San Mateo um Central Park. Um, but I uh, I, this is going to be a long haul. And I think that um you know, these types of spaces are important for people to have um as we continue to push through. And so, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you. I, I forgot that. There's been so much going on and really um uh, oh, I was in disbelief when I heard that and um now is the time to ensure that, you know, the rights of uh women don't go backwards. And so um, yeah, there's, there's just so much ahead. Um, but thank you for the opportunity uh to speak on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Um, I am shocked as well. Um, but I would like to um extend to Vice Mayor Ray Bonator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to report on something that the council has worked on, which is the Alice Bullos Memorial Freeway. I have been um, I just informed actually today, tonight that over the weekend, the two signs of the Alice Bullos Freeway were actually installed. Uh, I thought they were going to give me a heads up when it was going to be so that we can maybe do a uh ceremony or some sort. But apparently they did it on Saturday, so it's already up. Uh, I'm mentioning this also because I think we should, as a council, um, have a ceremony. And if there is a way, I don't know, maybe staff can cover it up for a little, just a little bit and then we can do a grand uh uh reveal, if you will. Uh, so maybe if we can ask the city manager or Stephen, the Assistant City Manager today, if they could do something to, I know that they've done that and signs before. They've covered it until the ceremony uh happens, so maybe we can get that done and expedite a ceremony as soon as we can. So I'll talk to um maybe the city manager about it and we can try to coordinate something. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, it's been a lot of things that have been going on over these past um few days. But I just want to um reinforce what Councilmember Justin Manalo said, um in terms of reproductive rights. I mean, it's the only system I knew and I know for many. My heart goes out to the states that are either going to restrict or or ban abortion. This heartens me a lot. Um, but um, I just want to also report out with Justin um reported out about the the Youth Empowerment Entrepreneurship, Entrepreneurship Employment Program. Um, I had a great, great time and I just want to say thank you to the staff that was able to work really quickly, like Stephen Leilani, Charlie, Angie, um Shauna, to make it possible to have a space for these young folks to um have a space to be trained, right? And these programs are very, very necessary. You know, it provides a sense of capital for them to obtain workforce experience, um education, um and also like a networking. Um, and it's really, really important. I wish I did this when I was in, in high school. Um, but the students looked very, very um eager, ambitious and I was also appreciative that they came over to City Hall and just, we did a really quick field trip around the mayor's office and all of the different departments. So thank you to the YEET program. Um, I also want to acknowledge the folks from the Bay Area Mural Program, BAMP, that was able to put the Daly City um mural right, right there off of um um where Mitsubishi Daly City is. Um, I got there late, but I was able to meet the artists. Um, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni was there. Um, Victoria Mabilang from um, Mabilag from DCPLA was, and especially shout out to the Jefferson um High School Art Club um that did all the, did all the uh the artwork and hopefully we can have more mules around um the city. It just makes it more vibrant. It gives it um another flair or flavor down towards the city. And beautiful. And I, I know we're going to be trying to work on, you know, we're celebrating a lot of things. So hopefully we get a chance to um celebrate and showcase that mural to folks in the near future. Um, also with the Juneteenth holiday, um, maybe we'll work with staff in the future. I know that there were some municipalities that um had Juneteenth flags that were raised at their, at their city hall. It's maybe something that we can look forward to in the future as well. Um, yeah. Okay, um, I don't see anybody else with any other reports. Um, we'll go ahead and move on to our staff, staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have any additional staff reports tonight, but um just in response to the Vice Mayor, we are already on it and looking into how to hold a ceremony for the big sign reveal. So we will, we will keep the council posted on that. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen. And last item is adjournment and I would like to pass it to Councilmember Justin Manalo for our um adjournment memory list.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's really with deep sadness that um uh, one of our community members who's avid, avid community. You've, you see her everywhere. Um, Ellie Serrato's mother passed away, Margie Serrato. Um, really send um our deep condolences to her um and her family at this time. Um, the services for Margie Serrato will be at Dugan Sarah Mortuary. Uh, July sixth is the viewing and rosary from four to eight. July seventh is the Catholic Liturgy at eleven AM and reception to follow at twelve forty-five at the Bass Cultural Center at five nine nine Railroad Avenue in South San Francisco. July eighth is the burial at one PM at Saint Mary's in, in House Street in Oakland. Um, and so we uh send our deep condolences to her and her family. Also, um, Mr. Mayor, um, would like to adjourn in memory of Allied Way Services of Daly City, John Delucci. Um, you know, brother Delucci, uh, John Delucci worked out of the Republic's uh services, Allied Way Services of Daly City for thirty-six years. Um, and he proudly served his community. Um, every single day we send our deep condolences to uh John Delucci and his family.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Um, Vice Mayor Ray Bonator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Joey Caymans. Joey uh is a well-known uh community uh producer, entertainer. He's organized a lot of events throughout the community, especially the Adobo Festival. Um, he just recently passed away over the weekend. Uh, so uh, God bless him and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add to John Delucci. Um, haven't seen him for many, many years and with Tony Estrada and our Teamsters Three Fifty. Always with a smile and um everybody that knows him or had the pleasure to know him. He lit up a room, always the jokester. So Tony Estrada, Teamsters Three Fifty. Um, big heart, big love. And uh, John is always with you, big paisano. So uh, grazie mille. Thank you.
And with that, I would like to offer a moment of silence. All right, everyone. Um, have a safe uh Fourth of July and we'll see you all in next month. Bye, everybody. Bye, everybody.